Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Glad to be here tonight and glad to make this presentation. And this is a good ask that you asked for, and we were able to get it, and then some, maybe some more next year. So it's an exciting time, and I know you guys need it with all the growth that's going on here in Albemarle. Proud to be a part of it, and proud to be helping you out.
I did what the Senator said. Just glad to be here. What a good budget we had this year. Would like everybody to know, because people want to say, "Yeah, is that how all you can do with my money, and you spending my money?" There's not one borrowed dime in that $30 billion budget that we just spent. And we, the State of North Carolina, owes less money this month than they owed last month. We're paying our bonds off as we go. We're not borrowing any additional money, and we're cutting your personal income tax. So that's about as good as we can do. But we're glad to be here, and at least all my municipalities, Albemarle got the most money of anybody. Did you have anybody that got more than?
No.
Yep. So that's how important you people are to us.
Thank you.
We are so grateful to both of you. Thank you very much. You do not know what it means to our budget and for our citizens to allow us to do a little bit more with our water and sewer. So thank you very much. Introduce who's with you there, Wayne.
This is my research assistant, R.A. Toby Pennycutt. Toby's been with me four years. He looks after all my bills, keeps all the bottles in my hair. He said in big appropriations would be for three, four months. We would like to get a picture.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Council, let's all go out front and take a photo.
We used to call this Kodak moment, Wayne. But not anymore.
Ah. Too many cameramen.
Good night.
That's how you start a meeting off right there.
That's right.
I'm a little bit adjourned.
That's right. Can only get worse.
Next item is approval of minutes. We'll consider the minutes from the November 6, 2023, regular enclosed session meeting.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second by Councilmember.
Second.
Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carried. I have no agenda adjustments. Under announced allegations, Durham Lewis CPA to present the fiscal year 2223 audit report for the Albemarle ABC system.
It literally seems like yesterday y'all were here for last.
Time goes by. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Durham Lewis from Lewis CPAs. With your permission, I'd like to present the audit report for the Albemarle ABC for the year ended June 30, 2023. If I could direct your attention to page one, the independent auditor's report, I'd like to read the first paragraph for the record. We have audited the accompanying financial statements of Albemarle Board of Alcoholic Beverage Control, a component unit of the City of Albemarle, which comprised the statement of net position as of June 30, 2023, and 2022, and the related statements of revenue, expenses, and changes in net position, and statement of cash flows for the year then ended, and the related notes to the financial statements. In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of Albemarle Board of Alcoholic Beverage Control as of June 30, 2023, and 2022, and the respective changes in financial positions and cash flows for the years then ended in accordance with accounting principles, generally accepted in the United States. That indicates that the ABC Board receives an unqualified opinion, the highest opinion that can be issued by an auditor. Essentially, the books and records were in fine shape. We found no irregularities. We can skip ahead to page four, under management discussion and analysis, which is a summary of the audit report. The first two items I'd like to bring to the council's attention. Working capital was $1,001,052.48, and profit distributions for the year totaled $580,000. If we could go ahead to page seven, which is the statement of net position, which those of us in the business world will call a balance sheet, governmental accounting, governmental financial statements have slightly different titles. Current assets total a million 654,000. Cash was slightly down. Inventory was up a little bit. Fixed assets total a million 615,424. Accounts payable was up at year end with $39,000. Liquor taxes totaled approximately $150,000, and distributions payable were at $140,468. The net position or retained earnings equity of the Board was $2,001,556.15. We go forward to the next page, page eight, which is the statement of revenues and expenses. Liquor sales total $5,756, which is approximately $300,000 increase from the prior year. Liquor taxes increased accordingly with the sales as did cost of sales. Store expenses were up slightly. Law enforcement distributions and alcohol education and rehab distributions totaled $60,000, with again, $580 going to the city for profit distribution. Change in net position was $21,312. If I could direct your attention to page 14, note two. No instances of noncompliance with NC general statutes were noted during the year. That's noteworthy as well. We have several pages relating to pension expense for the year. The Board had no leases and no long-term debt as of year end, and there were no related party transactions. If I could direct your attention to page 19, at the bottom of the page, we have a table detailing distributions from inception of the Board. With this year's current year distribution to $580,000, that brings the total to $3,887,000, distributions made since inception in 2003. Page 20 gives detail on liquor taxes. All liquor taxes were paid current at year I could bring your attention to page 22. We have note 14 summarizes the Board's position on working capital. The minimum and maximum working capital as mandated by the state have been maintained. Page 29 gives more detail about our distributions for alcohol education and law enforcement, and those were made in accordance with state statute, and they were all made in the proper amounts. And page 30 is a statement of the budget. The ABC Board operated within the bounds of the approved budget for the year. Be happy to entertain any questions that you may have about the report. Lewis, thank you very much. Board, thank you very much, and Karen, and all your employees. I have to say, I'm a little bit amazed that with all the road construction going on out there, that you were able to maintain this much of a business going on. I'm surprised that it didn't impact you more than it did. Thank you very much. And Steph, you have, or Council, you have any questions of Mr. Lewis or of the Board?
Well, yeah, that road construction causes people to drink, Mayor. It helps our business.
I just, I think we cannot let the number of $3.9 million go unnoticed that has gone to the city budget in the last 20 years. I mean, that's a lot of money. That is a lot of money when you think about what a penny on the tax rate brings into the city for real estate tax. So I just, you know, you all have done a phenomenal job, and, you know, and I just remember the days, well, we all remember the days when we did not have an ABC store here in Albemarle. The only one in the county was in Norwood, and before Norwood ever got one, the only one within about an hour drive was Wade's Bar. So if we think about the money that has been brought in here into our general fund, and not just into our general fund, because this $3.9 million was just to the general fund, and then the allocation to rehab has been there for the last 20 years as well. So, thank you.
Any further questions coming up?
I don't know if it's a question or not, but some of you know I run a jewelry store, and we have what's called leakage in trade and commerce among counties. And I know how much, I know about how much Stanley County people buy outside the county as opposed to what they buy inside the county. And I'm just wondering, do we have any figures at all that would indicate how much people spend on alcohol as opposed to what local, what they spend locally? Yeah.
Are you sure those statistics are available?
I think it's in the leakage report, I believe. I don't know.
I didn't remember if alcohol was in there or not.
There's a copy of it somewhere.
It'd just be curious to know, yeah.
We could get that information for you.
Okay, okay, okay. It's no big deal.
Further comment, question?
Just like to say thank you for, again, another great year. It's mind-blowing when you see what this can do as it comes back into the city and to the citizens of Albemarle, who are the beneficiaries of the hard work that you guys do, the time that you spend. I'm sure, like a lot of us, you don't get the pats on the back that you deserve for some of the things that you have to put up with, with people walking in when delivery trucks come in and so forth, looking for the most popular thing on the market today. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Would y'all like to say anything? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Moving to the consent agenda. 8A, consider road closure for YMCA Hot Chocolate AK. 8B, resolution 2327, consideration of offer to purchase city property, the vacant lot on North Ninth Street, tax parcel 628453. If anyone remembers, there used to be a water tank on this property. Council has received a bid of $5,000. By law, we will have to advertise that bid, and it will stand open for 10 days for upset bid in case anyone else wants to put in a bid for that piece of property. Council, have any questions about the agenda, consent agenda?
Move approval, consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich to approve the consent agenda. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carried.
You jumped over the departmental reports.
Okay, we'll back up to the departmental report. Anyone have any questions on departmental reports?
I've just got a couple of, not just questions, but comments that I saw on there. And Chief Bruton is in the back. Just want to note, I've seen where we've had some out-of-city fire trucks in some of our bays or some of our depart departments. How often are we needing to do that because of any kind of equipment that we've got or lack of right now? If you'll come up, yeah.
Come on up.
And I say this because I've ridden by all, well, I think probably ridden by 73 in Maine. I've seen a couple of them, and I just, and then folks are asking me, and I said, "Well, maybe I just need to ask that question."
Council, with your permission, at this moment, I can't answer how many times or the number of times that we've had to borrow a truck. So at next council meeting, I'll be more than happy to have that information for you.
But we have had to do it, is that?
That is correct.
And I guess the crazy question on my part is, why are we having to do it?
Mayor Protem, our fleet is aging, and that's the simplest way I can put it. Parts are hard to come by. With the aging fleet comes breakdowns a whole lot easier and more frequent. So we're doing the best we possibly can, not only to keep the trucks moving, but to keep everything in a positive way.
Okay. So I guess, I guess just as a feedback to that, if you're going to get that information for us, I'd like to know who we're borrowing them from and how we're able to do it. I know I've seen one from Oakboro, maybe East Side and maybe South Side, but if you can do that, I would like to have, I'd like to see that.
Oakboro has been the contributor. The other trucks that you've seen have been there for training.
Okay.
Or for backfilling when we're out on the call.
Gotcha. Thanks. I'd like to see that. Thank you very much.
While you're there, just briefly update the status of the latter truck and the status of the new engine that's on order.
The status of the latter truck. The latter truck has returned. It is at the shop right now, just getting some minor adjustments, but it is in service, and it will be put into service covering the entire downtown. So it will be in service 100% of the time. The new truck is scheduled to be here now in January. I think council was provided with some timely photos, and so that's what we're looking for, and we're excited about that.
Thank you very much.
So Chief, once we get those, once we get that truck out of the shop, and once we get the new truck in January, are we still going to have the need to request apparatus from other volunteer agencies?
The short answer to that is, I don't know. And that's just being honest. The newest trucks that we have at this moment are 2012s. We have one that's in the shop now that's a 2012. That's awaiting almost a $4,000 repair. To put it mildly, again, the trucks are aging. Two 2012s, a 20, a 2007, and now a 2002. So that's, and then a later model. So those are the things that we're looking at. And our maintenance team does a fantastic job in identifying these shortcomings, and then they get to, they get to work very quickly. Unfortunately, maintenance problems turn into repair problems real quick.
And I guess the last thing is, are we up to, are we fully staffed, or what's our staffing right now?
Currently, we are fully staffed. Through HR and their report, you will see that we do have one resignation.
I saw that.
And that resignation is actually going to a neighboring department. Again, that's just what we deal with.
And I just saw that we've had total 83 applications and five last month for, I guess there's one, you've got one opening that you're looking for all the time, is that right?
That's correct.
And then the fire inspector. We've still got a couple of openings.
We have hired a part-time fire inspector. So we currently have a full-time fire marshal and four part-time fire inspectors. And again, that's to keep everything current.
And again, we're looking at activity from October. That, it may be, this is, you know, the end of November. That may be the reason it's still out here, that you're still looking for somebody. Thank you.
I would say, Chief, this is also a positive in that the county comes and helps out regardless of where you got to go. I'm sure you will go to Oakboro, Locust, if the need is there. And I think that speaks well of our county and everybody coming together to help out when it may not be the best of situations anywhere in locale.
Relationships are very important, particularly in public safety. Whether it's police or fire, we're on a common purpose, and that's protect and serve, and serve our citizens to the best we possibly can. And in doing so, our neighbors see that, and they're not going to let us go without, no different than we would not let them go without.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item is, I'm not sure, I think it's in HR, and there's just, and I don't know, I don't, yeah, Dana's here. Dana, I think it's probably the second or the third page of HR, talking about some kind of training that is being done in different departments. I got somewhat lost as to what that training is. A lot of it's in red. I couldn't figure out what kind of training that was.
So the training that you're speaking to, Mayor Protem, is a report from our Risk and Safety Officer, Chris Vergara. There's a number of annual trainings that our employees should do on an annual basis. Chris reached out to each department and asked them when would be a great time for them to do it based on their workload throughout the year.
Right.
So you can see a lot of our departments are doing some really good work already, and he's only recently begun this effort.
So this is something that needs to have occurred. We've not been doing that in the past, is that right?
We want to ensure we have it reported. We're actually doing this training by the learning management system that is provided through the League of Municipalities.
That's what I saw.
And we just rolled that out this year.
Very good. Thank you very much. Then I have one more question of the Police Department in the police report, and I'm doing this really because of the folks that have continued to contact me on a regular basis about speeding, about what we're doing in those neighborhoods. And I see that the Assistant Chief is here, and the comment, actually in the report, it talks about that speeding issues that are being addressed are on 52 North and Woodhurst Lane. Is that over in Enersum Pike? So for the folks that might be watching, and I just got a text saying that the streaming is not working, so whatever that means. I don't know what's going on there, but anyway, if there are folks that watch it, they're supposed to be working, Police Department is definitely working over in the Woodhurst area. Last thing I'd like to just shout out is that it appears that public housing is, is public housing your depart, one of your departments?
No, no, public housing is under the city manager.
The one thing that we had been waiting for was Tin Mask to be up, and apparently Tin Mask is up now, and they're able to download and to talk back and forth. So that apparently is much better, and we're moving forward there. I guess I just wanted to make sure that we, everybody was on the same page, because these are some good reports. Thank you.
Mayor, not necessarily tonight, but at some point, I read in the monthly reports a lot of references to Pacer, where they track attendance at different events. At some point in the future, it can be in Michael's weekly update or whatever. I would like to kind of know a little more about how that works. And one thing that sparked my interest was when I seen the numbers from, I guess, the trick-or-treating event downtown in comparison to the Bait and Brew Festival. Just visually, I thought that we had a lot more people downtown for the trick-or-treat event with the kids. Although Bait and Brew Festival was attended well, I'm just curious on how that Pacer, whatever it is, worked, you know? Thought I'd like to know more about that in the future.
Sure. We will get a report on that. Moving on to unfinished business. Well, we haven't voted on that.
We don't, we just take, we just take the departmental reports. We don't have to vote on that.
Moving on to unfinished business, resolution 2325, Birmingham Senate Bill 579, shielding minors from obscenity. Council, you have a resolution in your agenda. What would you like to do with it?
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
For the life of me, I don't understand why we need to affirm a state law. We're going to abide by it. The only thing I could think of it was to try to cover up or make a little bit less of a problem when we voted last time we met not to protect children from drag shows. We're on, we're on record as doing that. I don't understand why we have all of these other things and drag shows aren't in there. Therefore, I would like to move an amendment to the resolution. If you would look at the section that says, "Now therefore be it resolved," that the City Council, the City of Albemarle, opines that entertainment featuring one content that might expose children to activities that may not have the social, that they may not have the social and emotional maturity to comprehend. My motion is, after the comma, to add, for example, drag shows, comma, or otherwise tempt children, et cetera. That's my motion. Mr. Mayor?
I'll accept your motion, but that would not be in conformance with the law with what we're basing this on. This is based on the state law, and the state law doesn't say that. But I will accept that, and do I have a second?
Before that, Your Honor, again, as Councilmember Bramlett brought up, I guess what I'm, I don't understand, what is this, what validity does this have since, you know, we, the vote went four to three last time? This resolution serves as what purpose?
This resolution is nothing but that's reaffirming that we agree with the state law, and we'll be enforcing it. That's basically all it is.
Are we going to agree with every state law that comes up that has to do with us?
This is totally council decision, what you want to do with it.
Mayor, I stand to be corrected, but I think when we took that vote a few weeks ago, Representative Wayne Sasser, he indicated that Senate Bill 579 will be implemented in December.
December, that's correct.
Okay. And it's November 20th now, you know. Just me personally, I rather leave well enough alone, you know, and wait on state law and follow state law.
Okay. All right. Do I have a second on the motion? Motion dies for lack of a second. I'll go back to the original motion. All those in favor of the original motion to approve the resolution 2325, raise your right hand. Raise your hand. All right, I have six, four. Those opposed? One, six, one. Mr. Townsend? Moving on to new business, MJSR 2304, Major Moving on to new business, MJSR twenty-three oh-four, major cluster subdivision on Mountain Creek Road. This is for a hearing to approve the preliminary plat for the subdivision. Staff, you introduce.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Brittany McClendon, planning specialist, I'm standing in for Kevin Robinson tonight. MJSR twenty-three oh-four, Mountain Creek Road is a ninety-two unit subdivision, just under thirty acres, zoned R-ten. Lots ranging in size between nine thousand seven hundred square feet and seven thousand and two hundred square feet. Um, staff reviewed and shared comments with the developers. Some revisions are needed, but staff feels it's reasonable to approve with conditions to ensure that all code requirements are met. On November second, planning and zoning board unanimously recommended approval to city council with the conditions provided by staff. So the first condition is, has already been met. It suggests that the plat needs to be updated, it currently shows a hundred and four lots, it needs to be corrected to ninety-two. That has already been addressed on the plat in your packet. The second condition, um, states that the plat needs to be updated to show the cluster setbacks and the standard setbacks for R-ten. So the plat currently shows cluster setbacks. Over here. Shows the cluster setbacks of fifteen feet in the front and the rear, five feet on each side and ten feet on sides abutting a street. Um, the plat also needs to show the standard setbacks for R-ten of thirty feet in the front and the rear, ten feet on each side and twenty feet for sides abutting a street. The third recommendation for the plat in question is that, uh, the plat needs to show adjoining property owners of the surrounding subdivision, which currently are not on here. Number four, the developer needs to show an additional, additional stub outs around lots ninety and ninety-two for future connectivity. So either a stub out here to continue a road or down here for future connectivity into the subdivision.
Can I ask you before you, uh, did you say that the houses will only have fifteen feet between the street and the front of the house?
Yeah, that's the standard, um, cluster setback reduction for R-ten, up to fifty percent. Recommendation number five, lot twenty-six needs to be tapered, um, to provide a twenty-foot minimum between the lot line and the water's edge. So here in this corner, this lot needs to be reduced and then the sizing needs to be adjusted, um, so the lot line doesn't run into the pond and we have twenty feet between both. Recommendation number six, the developer must submit, um, complete covenant and deed restrictions covering long-term maintenance. And at number seven, the developer needs to show more detailed information about amenities, including estimates for bonding during civil. Um, the developer has planned for community recreation area with gazebo, picnic pad and cornhole area around the existing pond. This would need to be reflected on the plat, um, as an active use of the intended open space. These were the recommendations that staff presented to planning and zoning board on November second with which they recommended approval. Staff would encourage council to recommend with approval of the same conditions.
Has utilities looked at this? They have looked at it?
Yes.
And we're okay with that sewer line that runs down through there? Uh, that may not be a fair question to you, Jay, but there's a sewer line that runs down through the middle of that property. I just want to make sure those houses are not owned.
Right, so we, we've looked at the property on a preliminary basis. Uh, if this does get approved, we would be doing a full review in the civil design stages. Uh, we would not expect that trunk line to be moved, uh, but we, of course, would verify that no houses would be located on top of our twenty-foot wide easement.
Are they, do they know it's there?
They do, we, we sent the, uh, the engineer that was working on this, the ASBIL, designs of the existing sewer lines, so they, they should be very well aware that it's there.
Jay, in a, in a, in a development like that, where you have a pond that's surrounded by, is there any provision for making sure that pond doesn't go stagnant? Or something like that over time? Is it a creek that runs through or is it, is it just a natural pond?
I, I haven't been out to the property in person to see what the nature of that pond is. This is simply an assumption, but from what, from my experience, what I've seen happen with ponds that are on properties that are existing is they typically turn into some type of storm retention, uh, whether it's a dry or a wet pond. So it's probably gonna turn into a, a BMP, a best management practice for stormwater, I'm assuming. Uh, but then again, that would just come down to the civil design stage of what the engineer decides to do with the pond. But that is an assumption. At this, at this preliminary stage, it, it's probably unknown at this point.
Uh, Jay or Brittany, either one, um, I know Kevin's not here, so this might be a loaded question, but right now, in the city of Albemarle, can you give me an idea of how many housing? How many actual housing, how many houses do we have, are we, are sitting on the books right now? In other words, how many, how many have we approved? What's the total amount of home sites we've approved right now in the city of Albemarle?
I can give you a rough number, we, we've crossed the four thousand mark. There's nowhere near, just that one big subdivision, a lot of fill-in being built, but we've crossed that, everything is built that has come before council.
So four thousand home sites have been approved in the city of Albemarle?
Right.
But I will say, this is the first one, we've been east, we've been west, we've been south, this is basically the first thing going north, so. To that effect, I do think we should be spreading them out around the city some.
Not to sound like a broken record, but I'm just telling you, if we have two developers start moving dirt at the exact same time, it's in my opinion, we don't have the infrastructure to support it. We don't have the schools, the police, the fire. We don't have it, four thousand houses.
If they started moving dirt today, Bill, you would realistically have a couple of years to make your decision on, do you want to add more officers and more fire?
We're gonna need it.
And we have plenty of water and sewer infrastructure, I will make sure, make sure everybody understands that, we have the capacity.
But if, if these, if, if the four thousand houses that we've approved, if you figure four occupants per household, that's two adults, two kids.
Doubles the population.
Where are these kids gonna go to school?
And, and Mr. Aldrich, to your comments, that's the reason that, um, some of us have been saying, when are we doing an updated fire study? And when, you know, we've got to look at what capacity is for our, um, for the fire department, putting feet on the ground, because we know if this happens, that's gonna happen. I mean, and several of us, I know that we all met with the school board just recently, and several of us made a trip over to Montgomery County a couple of weeks ago. Um, the schools aren't, they're, they're not gonna be ready, but they're not all gonna dig, you know, start moving dirt at the same time, but that, it is a true one. So when we talk about infrastructure, we're not talking about water and sewer and electricity, we're talking about people. And we're talking about services, that's exactly.
Yeah, in my, in my mind, infrastructure, uh, is schools, fire, EMS, police, things of that nature.
I will remind council, oh, I'm sorry, I, I will remind council that we are, uh, getting ready to start on the comprehensive land use plan that will look at some of these items, uh, particularly infrastructure and, uh, how we are planning for growth going forward.
And for the record, I'm not against growth, I'm not against growth and development. I mean, when you look at the, when you look at the, uh, population of Albemarle, we've had very, we've been very stagnant in growth over the last fifteen to twenty years. But I want to be smart about it.
I, yeah, I, I agree with, with Bill, and the other thing that, I don't know, maybe you can answer, is that we're, we, we, we've got all these that we've approved, but what's gonna be the build-out? Five years, six years, ten years? I mean, it's not gonna be next month, next year, or the year after with all these. So I think that's, there's another variable to play into the overall scenario. Not that it gives us that opportunity, but in fact, it does give us an opportunity to start addressing hopefully some of these concerns that we all share.
And some of them may not, may not get built, but ones that you, like these, that are, that are in field, where the infrastructure's already around.
Who is doing this?
This is the same owner that is, is gonna be building the apartments behind Walmart. Now, I can't say that he's the one that's actually gonna build them, but he is the one that owns the lane.
I'm just curious, of these four thousand, I wonder how many of them are developed locally or if it's outsiders doing it? I'll bet all of them in.
Most of them are outside.
And a lot of, a lot of the information that Councilmember Aldrich just asked about, um, if I'm not mistaken, I think, uh, Kevin gave that to us
He did.
when we met with the school board, you know, but, uh, practically each subdivision is a number of houses.
Mm-hmm, he did.
And we know that it's gonna take several years, but what, back to what Mr. Dry said, we don't know that it'll be ten years before these things are built. We have no idea, and we will, we will not have the control over that, because I think the interest rates and the economy's gonna control how quick a lot of these things get built.
We could, we could end up looking pretty bad if we've got eight or ten major subdivisions that are a third build-out. It would just not look too good about it. But I, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna punish these people for what we're talking about, because I think maybe we ought to slow down after this, rather than, rather than.
Well, you've got a couple that's gonna be coming to you in the next two to three meetings, and then if council wants to drop, uh, a, a, do a moratorium or something like that, you can do that. I think you, the ones that are already in the process, I think you need to go through and, and hear them. But if you want to do something after that, let's do it so that Kevin and him know before somebody else comes to them. Uh, in the past, there was no appetite on this board to do a moratorium.
I think this kind of sends a bad message, even with this discussion, as though we may not have our ducks in a row. If we get a major, somebody to bite on that, I'm my business center right now, and then they review our council meetings and hear us talking about, they're not sure we got infrastructure, then they're not coming here, you know?
And that's exactly right.
We need to have some off, off-camera discussions.
We'd have to have some awful hard evidence to, to do a moratorium.
That's the reason I mentioned, Mr. Townsend, that, uh, infrastructure, water and sewer, we are in good shape, water and sewer. I think what the discussion is, is more man, manpower and equipment, and that's something council can decide and implement within a couple, three years. But a water and sewer, if you're talking about replacing, having to put in a lot of lines, it takes a lot longer, but we are in good shape with that. We have plenty of capacity, especially with what we're getting ready to do with our sewer plant. So I think we're in good shape, water and sewer, it's just a matter of what council wants to do manpower, and if you remember, fire department had a request last year, Ian, for, for a fire grant, and I'm assuming they're possibly pursuing that again this year, we'll see what they tell us in the budget preparations. But, uh, you're gonna hear that from police and fire, I think, as we move forward.
And I'd, I'd like to add next to, this is a great problem to have. It's a great problem to have.
So if I could just make a general comment from some of the comments I've, I've heard around the dais, uh, I, I've been here since September of twenty eighteen, starting out in the planning department, and that's just about when a lot of this growth started to come to our boards and commissions, all these subdivision proposals and everything. From what I've noticed, uh, from the inside looking out, if you will, is we, we have approved several developments totaling, you know, past four thousand dwelling units across the whole city. From what we've seen is that, you know, we have Morgan Hills, which is developing, that's been approximately two hundred, two hundred and fifty units, they're just about to start on phase two, which is another fifty to sixty units. Uh, we've seen Park West Phase Two, which was a, was a development that was actually approved back in two thousand two, did not build out due to market volatility and things like that, but has just recently built completely out. Uh, we saw Grand View, the original Grand View, and roughly thirty homes, give or take, that was originally approved back in two thousand five, two thousand four, has recently built out within the past five years. And Grandview Meadows, which was about a hundred, hundred and twenty lot development, extended on to the Grandview subdivision that has built out as well. In totality, that's really all the developments that we've had that have been planned major subdivisions. We've, we've seen record-breaking infill development across the city with just, you know, one acre lots that have been subdivided into three, four, maybe five, and putting, you know, infill houses and stuff on that. Um, uh, out of all the developments that we've approved, such as Avion, Baden Meadows, uh, the names are slipping on me right now, but there's, there's several that have just not moved dirt yet. And what may provide council some level of comfort is, in our ordinance, we do have a two-year statute of limitations, so that if we, you know, approved a development, say, three or four years ago, and it just starts to come back, they do have to come back to council to get re-approved.
I didn't know that.
If, if they, if they haven't made any substantial progress on actually developing, uh, I would give some leeway to that, just to throw a statement of caution in there, because some developers, such, like Avion, it's a very big development, takes a lot of time to do the civil design, the permitting, the engineering, the permitting through the state. So you, you may want to stretch that a bit, uh, but, you know, just like the market crash back in two thousand eight, where a lot of these subdivisions were planned out that didn't build, that have built within the last five years, that's sort of what happens with that statute of limitations. I just wanted to offer that up as, as a thought process for council.
Further questions or comments?
So where's Brittany? So, um, planning approved it with those certain conditions. Yes. And I always go back to that sheet that you all have in green and red. Okay, I always go back, because if something says incomplete, I want to make sure that that's an eye that's dotted and not just left.
It's one one I use.
It might not be that one, it's, I think it's the other one, it's under.
This one.
Um, there you go, there you go. So it would be my assumption, and I don't like to assume anything, that the, that this is the red and green markup of what the conditions were.
Yeah, you'll see that red says, um, draft protective covenants placed on the subdivision, which I mentioned as a recommendation, um, naming adjoining property owners, which I mentioned as a recommendation.
On the plat, on the plat.
Yep, on the plat. And then other things that aren't on here are just things that should be on the plat based on our ordinance.
Did anybody show up to oppose it?
At the public hearing?
Yeah.
I, I did not attend, so I can't, I can't answer that.
I, I watched it, Mr. Bramlett, I don't recall anybody, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the.
You're removing approval of MJRSR twenty-three oh-four
Yes, sir.
for Mountain Creek? We have a motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second.
With the conditions.
With the conditions.
Of course.
Okay, well.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Five, two, you got that, Miss?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to TND, Resolution twenty-three twenty-eight, to update the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four salary schedule. There's not any questions, if there are, Ms. Chaney is here. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. For information, the employee Christmas lunch will be Thursday, December fourteenth, eleven-thirty a.m. I'll ask council to serve for me that day, because I will not be available to prior commitment, and I'll start around the table. Ms. Darren, do you have anything?
Just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Bramlett?
I just, as I think I told you last time, we now have the Pfeiffer Mineral Collection, uh, down at Starnes Bramlett Jewelry Store. Invite all of you to come see it. It's quite a, quite a nice, uh, display.
Mr. Aldrich?
Uh, just a question, uh, do we have a, is there any reason, uh, Mayor Protem Hall mentioned earlier that, uh, the meeting was not available for viewing? Do we, have we had a process change on that, or is that, is there something, Mr. Squires, that you're aware of? Any kind of technical difficulties we're having?
There was a chain, uh, a challenge with getting the livestream going tonight, so we restarted that. It has been live streaming. It's been going the whole time, but it's, it's labeled new event, but in the archive, we will rename it to show today's date. But it has been running the whole time. If you go to the Vimeo page, you know, like I said, we've, we've changed what we're doing live streaming. It's no longer going to Facebook, uh, and it will not go to Facebook any longer, but we are archiving it and playing it on Vimeo.
So, can we make sure we get that, uh, David on our website, how to properly, or how to find that if, if residents aren't aware of how to easily access that? Um, the only other thing I've got, Your Honor, is I just want to say a special thank you to Senator Carl Ford and Representative Wayne Sasser. Uh, as many of you probably know, uh, Mr. Sasser has been a huge asset to, to District Sixty-seven for the last six years. He's announced he's not going to seek reelection, but, uh, he's been a, a huge, um, he's been a, he's been a big success in that seat, representing all of us in Raleigh, and I just want to say thank you to Representative Sasser. And, uh, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, uh, all the city staff and anyone that may be watching, or, uh, my fellow council members as well.
Mr. Hall?
Let me add something to that. We do have another year of Wayne down there with another budget year, so don't forget that.
But it's the second year of a biennial, so there won't be a lot.
Right.
Um, uh, two just follow-ups. Two weeks ago, there was a regional, um, Central Island Council of Government meeting that I attended, attend one every month, uh, and I learned something there that I had not heard before. I've been doing it a long time, and it may be something that we know about, uh, Darren, and we may not, okay? That the National Guard will do, will come in and do independent studies of a lot of IT and a lot of that. So, just that, that they're, they're doing that everywhere, not just, okay? And that we need to make sure that if we've not, that we do, okay? Uh, last week, I was, um, at the National League of Cities meeting, representing the League of Municipalities, and there were three, three issues that were just ringing everywhere, and one of them was homelessness, one was staffing, and the other, um, that hit me was any kind of business development. And, uh, in going to different sessions, and at some point, I'll do my notes, I just, I didn't get home until Saturday evening. Um, I'll do some notes and send them out to you all, just because, again, and I look at Dexter, because Dexter used to go to these meetings, and what we would see is that what we are facing right here, we're not a silo. Everybody's facing them, whether you're a big city or a, um, a little city. Um, the staffing issue, uh, public safety across the nation, there's big-time issues there, um, for many different reasons. Uh, but staffing is a big issue on how to keep people in recruitment and retention across the nation. Homelessness, um, did a lot of different presentations about that, and thank you, Dexter, for reaching out to Homes of Hope. I actually spoke with her today and am going to give her a list of folks, um, not necessarily people, but organizations that folks across the nations are using to deal with homeless issues, um, that it's not just, just a social issue. It's an issue that deals with a lot across, um, many different barriers. And lastly, um, something that we've talked about at the Albemarle Business Development Center is making that park a multi-use park, not only for big box, anything, industry, but to make it multi-use. And several, um, two of the workshops that I attended talked about what you put in that multi-use center. One of the things that is coming to be a big problem, and not to any of us, because, well, maybe one of us has young children, childcare across the nation. Childcare is a very, 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 um, important issue, but there's very, there are fewer today childcare facilities, even in Stanley County, than there have been in the last years. Um, and having at a business park, we've talked about it, and Lindsay and I have mentioned it before, um, having an onsite childcare facility within that business park, um, either within, within, um, the actual businesses or at the park, is something that we probably need to think about, because that is, you know, some place, some places are twenty-four, seven, three shifts, and to have that third shift, you gotta have somewhere to, to keep your children. So, just know that that's a big, across the nation, it was being really discussed. The last thing I want to bring up is that we will have one more meeting before the parade, but we need to have our ducks in a row before the parade. Um, you may have seen that, um, Ms. Alice Davis is going to be our grand marshal. Um, that I think hit, that hit Facebook or that hit social media today, I think, for sure. Um, that is very, very, um, a great, um, decision there. Uh, she will be leading the parade on December ninth. I don't know that we have come up on how or what we're going to ride on. I do believe that Parks and Rec has us a tractor and a low-bed trailer, but I don't know that we, as a council, have been told that. So, um, and what we're gonna do about somebody walking, because now, now we can't throw candy, we're gonna need to have somebody walking. So, I just think that, you know, we do have one more meeting, but yet, that's three or four days before.
We, we do, to answer, uh, that, we do, uh, have, uh, plans, uh, as like, like, like last year, to, uh, have council ride on, uh, one of the, uh, one of the Parks and Recreation vehicles.
And I would hope, as councilmembers and mayor, we would rotate getting, walking and throwing candy.
I'm walking the whole time.
Yeah, I might too.
Eat candy if I was.
Mr. Whitman?
Uh, I hope you have a great Thanksgiving and be safe.
Mr. Dry?
Oh, yes, sir. I would, again, like to throw kudos out to the Albemarle High School football team. They did, uh, win in the first round, unfortunately, uh, against Thomasville. Uh, that was a tough game, but when you look back over the last five, six, seven years, uh, the program has struggled. Uh, Coach Davis has remained true, and the dedication that he and these young men have put together, I think warrants our, uh, respect and, uh, a job well done under extremely difficult circumstances, when you can only one platoon, and it took a whole year for these guys to get there and play their hearts out. And thank you, guys, very much. Coach Davis, thank you. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and be safe as you travel.
Just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, happy Thanksgiving, and I will entertain a motion that we adjourn until November the thirtieth at four p.m. for a council work session that will be at the EYL Center.
This may be a record, but I, but I move.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hunt. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.